All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:00 P. M., and I'd like to welcome you to the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting, July 24th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sticks on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Kaylin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Yes, Trustee Doherty, here. Trustee Humphries will not be in attendance tonight. Trustee Quintia, here. Trustee Slater, here. Trustee Topic will not be in attendance tonight. President, your gun.
Here. All right, item number four of the agenda is the approval of minutes from June 26th, 2024.
I will motion to approve.
I have actually one, one correction, just minor. The individual that rolled these up just put board packs in, so that just needs to be made.
I saw it.
Yep, I was. That's really it. So, other than that, correction.
I'll move we accept as corrected.
All right, because we have a second to the amended motion.
I have a second.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented with the one correction, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the minutes have been approved as corrected with the being corrected. Item number five is financial matters, June 2024 financial report and the July 2024 invoices.
For the, as you can see, your fund balance report shows positive again because our June property taxes have begun to post. We are 50% through the year with 52.7% revenue received and expenditures at 45.1% through June. If anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Julie, can you remind me what item or line item 4820 is, the contributions operating line?
Oh, that is, that's donations, foundation and any other donations that the library receives. For example, like Downers Grove Junior Women's Club, when they pay for items in the children's room, those also come through that line.
It is significantly over because we received a check for the social work intern program for the work done last year.
All right, does anyone else, does anyone have any questions or?
No, I'll move to the approval of financials presented.
Okay, I have a second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financials as presented. Can we proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia?
Yes.
Trustee Slater?
Yes.
President, your gun.
Yes. All right, the financial matters have been approved as presented. Next item we have is the public comment. Before I open the floor to public comment, just want to review the rules as usual. The public comment portion of this meeting is meant to be an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments and feedback about the Downers Grove Public Library, to the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. The comment portion is 30 minutes long. As usual, we'll evaluate this at the end of the 30-minute mark to see if we have additional speakers. If you're representing a group, please limit your comments to one speaker for your whole room. If a member of the public goes over the time limit, I'll motion for a five-minute recess, and we'll continue on after recess. And if we continue to run into issues, we will go ahead and end public comments early. Go ahead and head to the podium if you're commenting.
Eileen Reiner, resident, good evening. I'd like to address the library accessibility as presented at the last meeting. First, all should understand that the library is not out of compliance with the ADA as its, in its current configuration. The changes required for ADA compliance are digital changes, not physical changes. Everything talked about last month regarding the entrances to the library for handicap access are about convenience and aesthetics. I'd like to propose some simple parking changes that will improve the convenience of handicap accessibility without a huge price tag. We have two entrances to the library, a north and a south entrance. I have never thought of either as the front entrance. There are two handicap parking spaces near the canopy of the south entrance. This is clearly the closest entrance from parking space to canopy cover. This should be the preferred handicap parking area, and three spaces could be provided here. This would immediately improve the convenience of accessibility. There's a 15-minute parking space on Forest, right where the ramp down from the parking lot turns to go into the lower north entrance. Making this space into handicap parking would cut off 42 feet of ramp travel into the building. On the north side of the building, there are three handicap spaces and two 15-minute parking spaces. With the addition of south and west side handicap parking spaces, the north side could be dropped to two handicap spaces and an additional 15-minute parking spot to replace the one taken away on Forest Street. This is an inexpensive improvement to accessibility of the library, taking advantage of the proximity of parking to the south entrance canopy. This will require some cooperation with the village, but it should be easily navigated. Think about this as you're hearing the cost numbers of the proposed changes from product architecture tonight. Remember, you are the fiduciaries of the taxpayers. Access to the library received 18 of 72 votes in polling at the DGPL Retreat. A nursing station received 14 of 17 votes. There were zero, zero requests from patrons in 2023 and 2024 for a nursing station, yet this is in the architectural plans. In Rethinking Libraries paperwork, page 101, 46 people said, "Stay out of social services." 18 were pro-library social services, and six said, "Collaborate with the village." That is 52 to 18. There is no mention of a social worker in the strategic plan that I could find, yet a social worker office is in the renovation plan and being voted on by the board. I don't understand the prioritizing of it when the pro-con was 52 to 18. Please consider all this in your deliberations.
Good evening, Warner Keenan, resident. Tonight, I'm going to describe a situation that occurred at Jewel on Ogden Avenue approximately two weeks ago. I would ask that I reflect upon your reaction to the situation. A 20-something-year-old woman was yelling at Jewel, "Help me," very loudly. This is all she kept saying over and over again. The police were called, and she was escorted outside, where she was greeted with three squad cars, uniformed officers, an ambulance, and a fire truck, all had their lights going. What was this woman seeking help for? Was it mental health issues? Was it for substance abuse? Was it for domestic violence? Was it for her child? Was it for housing? We won't know the answer to this question or what happened to this young lady. What we do know is that she had no place to turn. She went to Jewel to ask for help. We've been discussing the need for a social worker at the library. Had a social worker been available, would this woman have been welcomed at the library, or would we say that she was disruptive to the library environment? As director of the mental health center, my programs were mandated to respond to the needs of this person. We would define what she wanted and provide her with services. So that she did not fall between the cracks in the social service delivery system, I would have assigned a case manager to check in with her until she received the services she needed. But in Downers Grove, where would this lady go? I therefore make the following recommendations to the board and to the audience. Number one, approve the hiring of a social worker and evaluate the scope of services that the social worker will provide. Number two, as taxpayers living in this community, let us form a coalition and work with other communities to obtain services for an individual like her. Number three, with this coalition, let us meet with the DuPage Health Department to obtain services for Downers Grove and surrounding communities. Number four, since we are considering a social worker, let us also define the social service delivery gaps. There was a sign on the back of a pace bus that said, "If you need substance abuse services, you should contact the Will County Health Department." DuPage County recently turned down an offer for substance abuse services by Haymarket House and Gateway Foundation. Those are two large programs that I've worked with in the past. In addition, the DuPage Health Department does not provide family therapy. Therefore, intervention services to children and adolescents are severely limited. Affordable housing is also lacking in our community. And lastly, rather than this constant bickering that we have heard over the past several years, let us work together to resolve the issues that confront this community and give the due respect to the library and the staff that they deserve. This young lady could be you. Thank you. Social worker at the library.
Can we just keep the trustee that comments to the end, please?
Are you done? My turn. Thank you, but I'm working. I'll need your help. Good evening. My name is Marsha Princeton, and I am a Downers Grove resident. In response to the assertion that pornography is everywhere in this library, I'm going to explore that topic. Pornography is defined as printed or visual material containing the explicit description or display of sexual organs or activity intended to simulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings. The Old Testament asserts that the only valid sex is intercourse between married men and women. All other forms of sexual activity, including masturbation, oral sex, and non-heterosexual intercourse, are forbidden. The New Testament reinforces this message. Using the Bibles to help us determine what is pornographic, thoughtful individuals engage in the study of interpretation, exploring what relevant biblical passages meant in their original context, and what they mean to us today. Using biblical interpretation as our guide, then, is pornography everywhere in this library? Is the Psalm of Solomon, found in the Old Testament, pornographic when it talks about all sex between an unmarried couple, wherein the man's genitalia is described as sweet fruit, and the woman's as a garden of pomegranates that should be eaten? Is pornography in Ezekiel, which is attached to the New Testament? She lusted for the lectures of Egypt, whose members are like those of donkeys, whose frust are like those of stallions. Turning now to contemporary literature, is Fifty Shades of Grey pornographic? This sexually charged novel with sadomasochistic male dominance and female fetish themes stayed on the New York Times Best Seller list for 133 consecutive weeks. Or is this book, conventionally yours, a book that was portrayed here as women youth to become gay? When we kissed like this, I felt like the person I'd always wanted to be, 10 feet tall, powerful, confident, light. Are any or all of these examples of pornography, or is conventionally yours and other LGBTQ+ content singled out simply because it's about same-sex love? In response to that question, let's turn to the Illinois State statutes for clarity. Section 38 of the Illinois State statute states that any material or performance is obscene if the average person applying contemporary adult community standards would find that, taken as a whole, it appeals to the prurient interest. Materials are libraries, materials in libraries are on shelves because they are in circulation. If they are in circulation, they are being read by the average person who, by reading that content, is applying contemporary community standards. Indeed, someone may find certain content objectionable, for religious or any other reasons. However, the fundamental principle that everyone has the freedom to read must be held sacrosanct. We must, as thoughtful citizens of the democracy, align ourselves
One minute.
with the law, not with our individual opinions. A concept someone aspiring to be an elected official should always ascribe to. This leads me to the obvious conclusion that this library meets the benchmark of community standards and is therefore not full of pornography.
Hi there, Laura Temple, Downers Grove resident. I wasn't able to attend the village council meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I watched online, and I just wanted to say thank you to Trustee Doherty for her words that night and to thank her for her exemplary service on this board for the past six years, which we've made big shoes to fill. So, in case I didn't get to say it in another setting, I want to say it here. And also, I'll just add, fully support having a social worker in the library.
Janet Wing, resident, and I'd like to talk about parking, which we're going to talk You probably know that the village council is conducting their long-range plan and a number of community events to support those efforts. And I want to talk about how the downtown streetscape might affect the library, and the parking of the library. My goal is to protect library parking. One of the projects is the streetscape, which includes an exercise in enhancement of outdoor dining. And I'm going to use the village's words here because I want to be clear that this is exactly what their village materials say. The project consists of creating permanent public and private areas for use as outdoor cafes. Outdoor cafes could be located in a variety of areas, including on-street parking spaces, sidewalks, alleys, and parking lots. Sidewalks may be physically expanded to accommodate outdoor cafes. Some existing on-street parking spaces may be permanently removed. And my question when I read that is, okay, where are those parkers going to go? The, my guess is, the library lot. Parking issues are not addressed in the village materials, and they get really short shrift altogether. There's no discussion of what will happen to other, when parking, if parking spaces are eliminated, where distress will push parkers to go. The parking issues in the library were studied in 2019, in the 2019 parking study, and that is outdated. It is, in my opinion, is not a good study, and it suggests that if, in 2019, if the number of restaurants on Main Street between Burlington and Maple parked, the number of parking spaces that would be required to comply with zoning may need 485 parking spaces. That's before two new restaurants that are now open on Main Street. There are 65 parking spaces. So, and that particular study noted that 80% of the respondents were dissatisfied and said that there's not enough parking downtown for customers and visitors. Notes from seniors, and that particularly also affects the Downers Grove library parking lot, which the consultant suggests should be expanded only by Lot D. I don't know if you, it's behind Burlington Station. I have no idea this parking lot existed. It is not attractive, it is not, in my view, is not safe, and any notion that it might be used as overflow library parking is not very attractive to me. So, in this study, the notes from seniors say they don't come to the library anymore because there's not enough accessible handicap parking, it's too far to park. There are notes from parents who say they're not bringing their toddlers to Story earlier anymore because they can't get into, again, not close enough to park.
You have one minute.
Okay, and so, I encourage anybody who's concerned about library parking, or parking anywhere, to go to the village website, participate in the studies. There are meetings tomorrow at 2:00 in the main hall, they're two-hour meetings to give your opinions about these studies, and 6:30 at the work center on Belmont. So, if, and particularly if you agree with me, I would really like some company here to make voices known that we love our library, it's an asset to the community that needs to be protected, and access to that library and its benefits need to be protected by making parking convenient and close by, and who knows, maybe even expanded. But I want to make sure that, I suggest that the library, if the village works with the library, to include and make sure you all, we all have our parking to make our visits enjoyable.
Good evening, Delibert, resident of Downers Grove and former member of the Library Board of Trustees. At the June 2024 Board of Trustees meeting, I explained how this board had engaged in hypocritical and cowardly behavior, and gave examples of their incompetence with respect to government. Tonight, I'm here to add dishonesty and deceitful behavior to the list. Now, in my own time on the board, I saw disingenuous behavior directed at patrons who disagreed with the board, and who are attempting to hold the board accountable for the long list of irresponsible spending, poor patron safety, activism, and lack of oversight they are guilty of. Shockingly, at the June meeting, this stooped to a new level and extended even to a fellow trustee. At that meeting, as you will recall, the board considered a revision to the bylaws. The agenda packet had provided context of the changes board voted based on recent court rulings on government officials' social media, and then they further described it as a technical revision that Trustee Slater worked on. So, when the motion was introduced, Trustee Slater led the comments, starting with the disclaimer that the change was really nothing substantive. She went on to state that this change was in response to some attorney general opinions, further explaining that the bylaws allow them to make changes in response to legal requirements without as much of a formal process. After she finished, Board President Giugni doubled down, also minimizing the changes as not substantive and just a lot of fixing tenses. But then, they crippled their plans. Brand-new trustee Matthew Topic asked specifically to understand what changed. Trustee Slater, who reminds us often that she's a former attorney and therefore would certainly understand precise language, answered it. Perhaps because she knew she was lying to another board member, she fumbled her answer, stating that, "Well, most of it's in Section 2C with the conflict of interests and use of social media," just to make some clarifications on what our responsibilities are. She elaborated that the law, or the, no, not the law, the AG opinion had changed in the last month or so, and then laughed that they were always behind social media by about five years. And finally, she dismissively mentioned, "There were a couple of other things that just needed to be cleaned up." Then, as is this board's habit, the motion that was introduced for the first time and voted on the same night so as to escape scrutiny, passed unanimously, save for trustee Topic's wise extension, perhaps because he sensed he was being lied to. Now, both having legal experience, Trustee Slater and Topic are certainly familiar with the use of Microsoft Word to perform what's called a legal black line that compares two versions of a document. So, as a public service, I did that comparison, and I'll submit the results to the public record. Of course, it showed what I already knew as the motion was being presented. This wasn't just fixing tenses, and it likely had very little to do with responding to anything from the AG or any legal requirements. Instead, what this change was really about was an attempt to cover up the fact that the bylaw that I allegedly violated in the central resolution wasn't actually even in the bylaws. So, actually, this motion did include a substantive change. It was an attempt to sneak in the imaginary missing bylaw that not one single member of this board bothered to verify before voting that I violated. As a side note, adding this backdoor bylaw also brought back in another institutionalized gag order on board members by restricting them from, quote, "sharing the content of preliminary discussion with pending library policy changes" with their constituents in the community. So much for transparency. This library and this board likes to operate in secret, behind closed doors, without community awareness
One minute.
community involvement. So, trustee Topic, unfortunately, he's not here tonight, now he knows that he was lied to, and that his fellow trustees are just as content to mislead a trustee as they are to thumb their nose at the public trust. And this board's attempted cover-up lies in the central resolution now get the full light of day so that the taxpaying public can know how you operate. Incompetent, hypocrites, cowards, and now deceitful liars, and we are coming for your ordinances. As long as I have a few minutes left, I'll use it to point out that Trustee Doherty
Twenty seconds left.
leaves this board in disgrace, having violated the Library Records Confidentiality Act by discussing my personal information in a public forum. Trustee Doherty, who was so fond of pontificating about lowering the temperature of our political discourse, and who often scolded the public about taking 10 minutes to get their facts straight, was part of the backstabbing
You have five minutes.
venture, and didn't bother to take five minutes to check the bylaws before voting. You are a massive disappointment to someone I once respected.
Good evening. My name is Laura Hoist. I'm a resident of Downers Grove, and I wanted to say that I'm opposed, strongly opposed, to having the library hire a social worker. Due to all that has occurred for the last few years, there's evidence of social activism in this library, I think that having a social worker is not within the scope of what the library's functions are supposed to be, and it is inappropriate to take that step. So, I'm asking you to seriously consider not hiring a social worker, but to instead focus on how you can help the taxpayer in this community. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Noel Manley, Darien resident and native Interloper. Just a few initial comments. I always liked what Powder Stewart, the former Stowe Supreme Court Justice, said about pornography. I know it when I see it. And as for the Illinois Criminal Code, it's Section 720 of Illinois Code of Crime and Chapter 38. It's been almost four months since 28,031 names were legally released by the library, and still no one has been held accountable. A reprimand from the DuPage County State's Attorney was issued on June 3rd, and still no one has been held accountable. And to be clear, Bill Nyberg was censured and removed from the library board, yet no law was broken and no reprimand from the State's Attorney was issued. Now, as a native person, I have a keen awareness for injustice and hypocrisy. Differing opinions will get free boot from this board, but breaking the law gets a pass. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to trustee comments. Item seven on the agenda.
I have something quickly. As we've stated before, one of the goals for trustees for this year was to visit some other libraries and some other library board meetings, and I have been doing that. And what I'm finding is that other library boards, there's some procedural differences in how they do things. You know, some of those are by choice and some of them are statutory because of the different types of libraries that exist. The one thing that I got questions about from the boards that I visited was they've heard you're considering the social worker, and they're intrigued by it. Not necessarily for it or against it, but it's a situation a lot of libraries are dealing with and keeping an eye on. I thought that was interesting, that they're going to be watching it if we decide to go ahead with it. They envy the level of engagement with both staff and the board, with the community, with the foundation, with the Friends Organization. And I've said that over and over again at these meetings. Other boards sometimes feel like they're operating completely in a vacuum. And we appreciate the fact that people are showing up regardless of, you know, what the particular issue might be. What they don't envy is our parking lot. We've heard a lot from the public tonight on that, too. And obviously, that, you know, we can't do everything we want with the parking lot automatically. Those are some of the things that I've been looking at. And every library that you go to, some of you all have probably gone to other libraries, too, there are ideas that are maybe worth taking a look at or things that they have tried that didn't work, that maybe, you know, that we won't try. So, it's something I plan to continue to do.
Go next.
Yep. I want to thank you for your suggestions about the spots. I hope that you can take those to Village Council because we don't, unfortunately, because the library doesn't have those spots, because they're not our spots. And I would love if Village Council gave us, was able to work with us a little bit better on the parking in the library. I know it's an issue. I drove around the lot several times, say, before I found a spot myself. And I would love it if we could make some of those Curtis spots, a little bit more handicap accessible spots. I think it'd be amazing. But again, that's the Village Council issue. And I don't, you know, I hope that people are filling out that survey, as you mentioned, and saying this is an issue because the one Village Council meeting I did go to where parking was brought up, they were kind of like, "Oh, we don't ever have a hard time finding parking." But I don't believe that because every time I come, and I live downtown, I still look for a parking spot. It's hard. And so, I really hope that Village Council, because I think that would be a great solution if we could add some more spots that would be handicap accessible spots.
I think that's your job.
Well, we are, I reach out to Village Council commissioners as well. I reach out to commissioners and try to talk to them, and it explains to them our situation. And so, I hope that they hear us. I wanted to really quickly, this is not a, something that I mentioned that I was going to work on as being a trustee, was doing a little bit more due diligence on my own part and doing some research on what library trends are. And the words of Yves Buzelock's Innovation, what are some of the things that people are doing? And so, I kind of just typed in "social workers at libraries," and all sorts of information popped up. And I discovered that there are social workers in libraries in Florida, libraries in Georgia, in New Jersey, in California, in DC, in Texas. All of these libraries in all of these states already have social workers in their libraries to meet the demands of their community. I think there's misinterpretation or a purposeful misinterpretation that it's only unhoused people or mentally, mental health issue people who are going to social workers. But in the library in Texas, there were a lot of people looking seniors who needed paperwork filled out and struggling to fill out their paperwork. There were domestic violence situations where people were looking for someone to help them. I have reached out to the village social worker myself. I have yet to hear back from her. I'm hoping that we can connect soon so I can just kind of understand her role and kind of what she sees, if this is a great thing or not. I would love to talk to her myself. So, I think that would be nice, or if we could have that conversation as trustees, just to kind of understand that goal. So, I'm going to continue working on that because I want to understand more. So, that's it.
Great. I'm going to echo what O'Nally just said about the comments around parking. I thought that was really useful, inspiring your analysis and pointing out these specific improvements. That was great. And I also attended one of the meetings that J. H. referred to, and that is, it does seem like there's going to be more and more pressure placed on our lot and the village parking in general. So, I've gone to some of those meetings, filled out the, you know, filled out the survey, and I do, just like for now I mentioned, I encourage everyone to do the same because it's, the library is part of the community and the village makes some of those decisions. So, the more they can hear from all of us, I think the better. So, I appreciate you all bringing that to our attention and for having those kind of proactive ideas. I didn't attend the June meeting or make any votes, but after reading more about the changing Title II requirements, I wasn't here to say this, but I wanted to say, you know, we shouldn't underestimate the amount of work that it takes to change online stuff. I've been involved with that before, and it's very time consuming. So, I'm pleased to see the inclusion of the part-time role to help us accomplish that. So, thank you for putting that, adding that to our budget considerations. I also wanted to say that, you know, looking at the work plan progress to date, the report that was included in our packet this week or this month, I was super impressed by the creativity of the staff and their ability to achieve so many of our strategic goals with very little cost, except for staff time, which I shouldn't play down too much because staff time is super valuable here. That's how we get most of our work done. And so, that's why we see every year that increase to our budget. It mostly goes to our valuable and very hardworking and creative staff. Things like enhancements to Teen Central and implementing the Teen Library Council, super exciting. I actually, I've been doing some research on other boards, and some other boards actually have a student member who comes and sits. I don't know if they have full voting power, but they do come and participate in conversations and hear what the community has to say, which I thought was really interesting. So, Schaumburg and Poplin Creek are two of those libraries in our area that do that. I'm also really excited to see some upcoming plans for information literacy and civic engagement. I think this year especially, it's going to be really important for us to address that. Display's library just hosted the Museum of Tolerance Mobile exhibit, which I thought was really cool. I didn't get to see it, but I heard some comments about it from people who visited, and I thought that was an interesting idea. And I just, I had one, this used to be called library, or board comments and requests for information. So, I did have one request for information, and maybe it'll come out next month because it will have been after the summer reading program closed. I was curious about the numbers related to prize pickups at the other locations this summer. That was something new that was introduced. I know we, after the strategic planning process, we had talked a lot about how we can expand our services to folks beyond kind of this side of Diamond Grove, this kind of core area of downtown. And it was interesting to see that happening, and I'm curious about the numbers. Those are available.
I have no comments, actually. So, we'll move on to item number eight, the Library Director's Report.
And again, just going to reiterate that the parking lots are owned and administered by the Village of Downers Grove. And so, if you have comments, suggestions, they do take the comments of the public very seriously. So, do make sure that you put those suggestions in with them and participate in the Village's guiding DG process. I just wanted to call everyone's attention to the 2024 Strategic Work Plan mid-year review in the packet. There are some great highlights, including our Student Library Card Program, getting our summer reading materials in six other languages, the upgrades to our teen and tween areas, the big play area, our programs on information literacy and civic engagement. So, a lot going on, so please do take a look at that. Also, in the packet today is some information about the window replacement project that is going to bid very soon. And if you want to take a look at that, this project is in the capital needs assessment, and it will be replacing the 1977 zipper system windows on the building on the north, south, and west elevations. And we do expect that the bid award will be coming before the board in August and hoping it will come in within budget. Our preliminary estimates do show that it should. Also, that we are going to have a survey of the property to be sure of exactly where the options that you discussed with product architecture, exactly how much additional space in that footprint is added to the building under those. So, we want to be very sure of what our ask is as we move forward before we start the cost estimation process. And I want to thank our Building Operations Director, Ian Nor, for identifying a source of meeting room chairs. We will be replacing the chairs in this meeting room. Some of you may have noticed that there are quite a few cracked ones these days, and we keep having to weed those out so we don't have as many as we need. So, we are going to replace those, but they came in at about one-third of the price that we expected to pay. So, thank you, Ian. And then I want to call your attention to all of our statistics for June. The one area where things went down was our incident reports in June. In 2024, our incidents were half of what they were in June of 2023. And also, our statistics for June, I want to call your attention to our teen program attendance that is double year-to-date by the end of June than what it was by the end of June last year. So, it has just been amazing. We are so, we did not expect the success in the teen area that we have gotten so quickly. The teen desk has helped both to reduce the number of incidents and to increase our teen program attendance. And as you know, that does have some implications, as you have seen in the budget, adding some hours in the children's department so that we have the flexibility to get some of those kids from staff upstairs to help man the teen desk. And then, I also wanted to point out that our tween gaming area, we had anticipated that it might reduce the numbers of the use in the teen gaming area, and it has not. It has actually been additive to the numbers, the numbers of use in the gaming area. So, lots of, lots of kids are doing a lot of gaming and fortunately also not getting into as much trouble here at the library. So, yes. Also, we did change the format of the incident reports in the packet, and hopefully that's a little easier for everyone to read. And then I did want to do a shout-out to our board president, Swatni Gigani, our Marketing and Communications Manager, Cindy Catree, Adult and Teen Services Assistant Manager, Amanda Clank, who presented at the American Library Association Annual Conference along with me about leading through a crisis and gave a lot of examples of what we learned and how we would do it differently and advising others to prepare for a crisis before it happens. And that's all.
Item number nine is new business, the 2025 Salary Schedule.
All right. So, as you may recall, we went through the full re-benchmarking process in 2024. As we had provided for when we did our full compensation system restructure, this, the full re-benchmarking occurs every three to five years, and in the intervening years, we do a cost of living adjustment to the entire structure each year. We work with HR Source, which is a human resources association of employers in the Chicagoland area. And they also do the library salary survey for our area. That, and that survey provides a lot of information to us on salaries going forward. They also do surveys of Chicagoland employers, of other specific employer types. So, they have a lot of great information. So, their recommendation at this time for a salary schedule increase for 2025 is 2.6%. This is a preliminary recommendation. They have, since the last time we went through the cost of living process, changed the timing and the way that they release these cost of living adjustment suggestions. But 2.6% is their preliminary suggestion, recommendation for 2025. This also includes the $15 minimum wage is accounted for within this salary schedule. And also, you will see the note at the bottom about the bonus for any who exceed range maximum, and that is provided for also in the compensation sections of the personnel policy. Anyone have any questions?
I'm looking at the line items on this, and I have questions on the two positions. You have a hold for future use. One is a pay grade 15, one is a 16. They're both pretty well-compensated positions, and I'd like to know what those are being held for. Are those positions that haven't been filled? Or you're looking, I know that's not the social worker thing, that's a separate line. What are those?
These are actually just, the pay grades go up by a percent from each grade, up and down. Ours actually starts at the librarian pay grade, and then it's percentages up and percentages down. We just don't have any positions that fall in that grade right now. And so, it's hold for future use until we have a position that when, when the job description is evaluated and slotted into the salary schedule, would come in at that rate. So, there is no specific plan to fill any of those pay rates.
We just went through a similar process, and a lot, and sometimes that helps with wage compression, too. So, we have folks that have been around for a while, and there's no place for them to build. There's a way to kind of move slightly in one direction or another to help.
Thank you.
So, that some folks coming in at their midpoint salary aren't making more than someone who's been there for 10 years, for example.
And I, to Carissa's point, when we had first done our salary, done our first salary schedule a while back with HR Source, as the minimum wage, there was, there was one of those hold for future use at the bottom, and eventually, that's exactly that happened. The wage The wage compression pushed those bottom pay grades up into what had been held for future use.
I, maybe this was covered at the last meeting. When we got numbers for how much a full-time social worker position costs, did that also come from, did it get like fully scoped out?
We have not done a full job evaluation with that. At this time, we estimated that because it would be a master's degree level position, that we are estimating that it would be in the same pay grade as a starting librarian with a master's degree.
So like nine times, like that area?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion? Or any other questions?
Oh, and this actually might get into the work plan for next year, but I think potentially has a touch point here. When we were talking, there's an item, line item for exploring internships for MPG folks specifically. Are those paid internships? And where would interns fall in this scheme of things?
Interns are not part of our current salary schedule. And if you look at that work plan item, it's to make a proposal. So I don't know if the proposal's going to include pay for the internships. Although, although I will say, we pay our social work interns minimum wage. So I would not anticipate paying them.
Sure, sure. I'll make a motion to approve salary schedules presented. All right, second. We have a motion and a second to approve the salary, 2025 salary schedule as presented. Let's vote on this. Or, I'm sorry, we'll call. Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Quinta?
Yes.
Trustee Slidah?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes.
Right, this is approved. Item B, capital needs assessment, 2017 to 2027.
All right. And you all probably remember that the capital needs assessment acts as our spending plan for our library capital replacement fund. We do look at it every year. In some years, we have added things, particularly some high-dollar amount items that were not included in the original assessment. This includes things like the electrical relay panel project and the elevator modernization, as well as some renovation projects. This year, we are suggesting to add one high-dollar item, that is the automated materials handler, otherwise known as the sorter. This is the backbone of our circulation department. We do over 1 million items circulated per year, and it really makes a difference to have that sorter to help us get those items checked in and distributed effectively. We did, we had hoped that this sorter would last another several years, but we have been told a couple of years ago by the manufacturer, who also holds the maintenance contract, that they are no longer manufacturing this and no longer making parts for our sorter.
And how old is that?
It was installed in 2014, so 10 years old. We have hoped to get closer to 15 now. So, and the other item here is to move the carpet project back again as we anticipate the possibility of doing a larger renovation project. We would not want to replace carpet and then go tear up some of those areas. So as you can see, we, I did do an estimate before the budget was done. At a 2% to 3% annual transfer increase would put us close to the $1 million target at the, in 2027, which was actually self-imposed by the board when we first started discussing the library capital replacement fund. To this, to this point, we, this, the library capital replacement fund was started in 2017 with an initial amount of $1.4 million that was freed up by our IGA with the Village of Downers Grove. And then it has been additionally funded balance transfers from the library fund. We have since that time, since its inception, done $2, $3.2 million in projects with this, the library capital replacement fund. We will be discussing this further in the budget portion of the agenda, but we may need to, we probably need to back off on that $1 million library capital replacement fund balance. But the item that we're asking you to approve right now is in your board packet, page 82, the projects and estimated costs. So that is the, the updated costs of projects for the remainder of the assessment period, which is through 2027. And then the updated assessment report, which details each of those numbers, and that is pages 84 to 95.
Like Julie said, we might get into this when we started, you know, talking about the budget conversation. I don't think I was on the board when, when the kind of $1 million mark was established. I know we've talked about it last day for here, he would give us the history of it. But I, and I do appreciate that, you know, in the last several years, we've not had to issue bonds or have a referendum to do some of these massive, massive capital projects. So I appreciate having that balance and having a hefty balance in it, but I did wonder about like what, how firm that 1 million was and how, how comfortable we all are with being more flexible with that, if that means that being able to reduce the burden on taxpayers and other, and being able to do things that are in our strategic plan. So that was my, you know, again, we're not voting on that part of it, and it comes later in this process, but that was my question slash concern about this proposal, but it seems like that will be rolled into our budget conversations. And I'm curious to hear what my fellow trustees think about that as well, because I would think it would be a bust for the board at that point.
Yeah, I might have just started.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Swatni was on the board for approximately five minutes.
Right. It sounds really. I think it's reasonable, you know, for there to be a little bit greater fluctuation of the fund balance, given that we're not trying to pass on any, you know, projects to taxpayers in the form of additional bonds or anything. And I feel like we've done a good job since I've been on the board, kind of, you know, refiguring and reconfiguring projects and like what makes sense or what needed to be pushed up, whether we wanted it to be or not. And then, you know, some stuff I think is getting pushed back based on, you know, how far we've really stretched something. But, you know, like the sorter, that's a huge deal. And, you know, the last thing we want to do is not have that up and running or have to scramble for that, you know, that large chunk of change when we're not really prepared for it, so.
If I recall from the previous conversations, when this sorter issue first came up, so maybe a year ago, several months, I can't remember exactly when it was.
I think it was our last.
I remember asking if this is something that there's a lot of competition on, you know, can you go out for 10 companies and do it on this? And the answer, of course, was no, because it's very, very specialized.
But there are several companies who do it now. When we, when the original sorter was put in, there were really only two. And so now, there's a handful, at least. So it's more competitive, and the costs have come down considerably. When it was first put in, it was probably around $1 million, and now we're looking at $200,000. So at least some. So. And just one other thing to bear in mind, as we're going through this process as far as a building, looking at our space and our space needs and a possible project, that will, that will probably bump up our next capital needs assessment. Instead of waiting until 2027, the final year, to do a full reassessment of the building and its long-term needs, we will probably do that at least a year early, because it, I think it makes more sense for us to do it before we go to a financial planner with a large project, more to have that full 10-year look at the building and its replacement needs, because, you know, it's a big building. It's an aging building. We need to stay on top of it.
Do we have a motion for the capital needs assessment?
So moved.
Just again. All right. Yeah, could you voice both? All those in favor of approving the capital needs assessed, assessment update as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and all those abstaining. All right, the capital needs assessment update has been approved. Item C is the draft 2025 strategic work plan.
All right. And while, while we did fix the incident reports in the board packet to be easier to read, unfortunately, the, the work plan is, was, came out in very small type. So if anyone has any questions, I hope you were all able to read it, read all the various sections and get them expanded to, to a good place for you. One of the driving forces in this work plan is, of course, the ADA Title II compliance. That digital compliance is very time-consuming. So we want, and it is very important, because all units of local government will have to be compliant with ADA Title II by 2027. And if you serve a population of more than 50,000, you have to be compliant by 2026. And we serve 50,247 people. So it also includes some other things related to ADA, ADA. There is a compliance officer training that Jen will be undertaking as, to better, to increase her skills in that area and to make sure that we are in compliance in all areas and continuing as changes like Title II, TOP. Also continuing initiatives like evaluating our partnerships, the development of our teen services. Like I said, we did not expect to be this successful this quickly. And we are working with our teen services team. So we have a cross-departmental team now from some staff from kids' rooms, some staff from adult teen services, who are all working together to make sure that we're doing our best in, for our teens. There are programming goals, like Makery kinds of things, civic engagement beyond voting. As you are probably aware, a lot of our civic engagement programs this year are all focused around the big election and, you know, finding voter information. And we've got some really great partners working with us to present some of that information, outreach at senior centers, et cetera. So a lot of good stuff there. And what we're really looking for on this is, is anything missing? Is there, is there anything that you think needs more thought, needs change?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate spot for this, but I want to backtrack a little bit about the, on the parking discussion, because that is part of the strategic plan. And increasingly, we all get feedback from people or our own experiences. We come to library and have trouble parking. I'm wondering, in terms of attempting to communicate with the village on how this all fits in, if it would behoove the board to designate someone to go to a council meeting and then the public comment, speak on behalf of the, the board of trustees of the library saying we've really got concerns about the effect on library parking for the, for the plans. It could be the chair, anybody. And it doesn't have to be even extremely detailed.
Yeah.
But some members of the public rightly pointed out, it is our job, if we're concerned about that, to communicate with the council. And since that has come up in the strategic planning process, I think we need to, to look at a mechanism to get that directly from the board. I don't know at what, at what point, or, you know, we can apply a motion or.
Yeah.
We can discuss it more. I mean, this is not going to go away overnight, but I think it's something we really need to, to talk about setting up a process for this board to go to council meetings and bring up issues as they come up pertaining to the village.
Okay, point of information. The village is moving on this plan very quickly, and after these comments from the community, the planners will start putting together plans and concepts, presenting them to the village for comment and selection and so forth. So the engagement of the village sooner is better than later.
Yes, and remember, the final two guiding DG sessions are both tomorrow, one in the afternoon and one in the evening. So again.
I'm planning to go to one or both of those sessions as a resident.
Yeah.
You know, if, if someone wants to, to go or to empower me to say I'm speaking on behalf of the board that we've got some concerns. No, that's.
Well, so I'm, so we've not done this, what would that look like? So because we're not individually, we're not supposed to speak, well, separately, to speak on behalf of the board. So if one of us were delegated to do that, would we then have to like draft the thing, come to the next meeting?
Approve the thing.
Yeah. The thing, and then turn the thing over to whoever it is that now been nominated.
Right, it can't just be like a, right.
Ad hoc.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's my understanding, listen.
I think that's my understanding.
And just so you all know, I am attending the one tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, I realize that you speak to those issues as the director of the library.
Well, and I can share tonight's commentary.
Yeah. And we can share the concern of the board.
Just to go along with that ADA compliance and the things we're saying, that my big concern is, you, what's the sense of being ADA compliant if I can't get here? I mean, it all sounds, you know what I mean? I mean, we're like, I mean, that should be your one big thing you go down with. You know, we have these compliances, we have to meet, but what's the sense of having all this ADA compliance if people can't even get in here? They can't even park to get here.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm gonna circle back to our, to just the fact that we should be talking now, sorry. I appreciate, I appreciate the comments. I think that, that we need a plan moving forward as a board, that we can go to the village council. And, and I know that I reach out individually, I know I think we'll return individually to commissioners, but maybe this is something that we need to do in a public forum, where we, where we ask them directly. So I think that's a great idea. But also, the, the Title II requirements are, are digital requirements, so they're a little bit different than, than maybe.
But yes.
Right, but yes, I hear you.
So Julie, to go to your question about what's missing, I actually, I mean, there's a lot here. This is, this is super, I, as I mentioned before, I've been doing research on other libraries and what they're doing and how their strategic plan is playing out and how their board interacts and all that stuff. I've not seen such a comprehensive and impactful work plan shared as part of any other public library's strategic planning process. Like I, this is, this is one area, one of many areas where we are a leader. And seeing all of this, and again, like seeing the project. And seeing all of this, and again, like seeing the progress this year and kind of how far we've gone, seeing all this, and as I understand it, all within the budget that's been presented to us for 2025, and that, that's incredible. So I'm actually gonna call it, I'm gonna call it a silver lining of some of the criticism and conversations that we've had here with folks that have come. Because I think, you know, some of that, we were able to take some of that negative attention and turn it into some action items this year, some things for next year, discussions that are happening. I think it's, it's really great that we have such amazing staff that can put together such a detailed plan. And I don't, my, my one concern, I bring this up, I think probably over here, is, you know, making sure that we're not biting off more than we can chew, we're not stressing. You know, like, what, are there things that we can let go of that, that these things now take precedent? I don't know what those things are. I certainly leave that up to the staff and the leadership teams to deliberate. But I, this is very impressive and I really appreciate. Even though it is tiny, I do appreciate the thought. I do, because it makes it very clear. Makes it very clear, like, it goes from year to year. I like the, you know, kind of current, you know, the things that are happening this year, to be able to compare and go, oh yeah, we did the kind of fact-finding this year, and now we're implementing it. We're looking at this, and now it's phase one. That's very, it's kind of very deliberate and very intentional. It makes me feel good about the, that intentionality around a lot of these projects. And two questions. One's a silly question, and one's more substantial. What is a shelf talker? I just imagine like a...
A shelf talker, of the little things, you may have seen them. When you go into the stacks, there'll be like a little sign that sticks out that says like, if you like this book or this author, you might try this one.
A little synopsis.
Yeah, yeah. So those, yeah, okay. Those are shelves.
Got it. Okay. That sounds so cool, doesn't it? Check this book out. And so then, and then my more serious question. This, Rob, specifically the increased senior services now, which I'm going to first page, baseline satellite columns. And this year's activity was, or is review of capacity and need for expansion. And I, I don't think I saw that in the kind of update, you know, kind of a serious strategic plan. So I'm curious about the capacity for that. Because that does seem like something that would require more staff time and/or whatever. And that, so that one seemed like, oh gosh, I wonder if we do have a capacity.
So some of that is exactly what you were talking about, about what can we stop doing or what can we do differently? So what we've been, what's been happening in the adult teen services department is as they have been, they've had some staff turnover, they've done some reallocation of duties, but they've also looked at how they're doing certain things and how to streamline that. For example, satellite stacks, the deposit collections at our senior living facilities. We have seven of them. They have revamped the way they are doing that and how they're doing the deliveries, and really cut down the amount of staff time that it's taking to administer and maintain those collections. And so by doing that, it's the same staff who do primarily senior services. And so freeing up some time so that then we can look and, okay, what, where do we have these areas that need...
I will make a motion to a little bit of 2025 strategic work then, as presented. Hi, in a second. Alright, we have a motion in a second to approve the draft 2025 strategic work plan as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And all those abstaining? Alright, the 2025 strategic work plan has been approved as presented. Alright, I refer to unfinished business. The trustee chair of office changed from six to four years. This is something that we had talked about. It was something that the village wanted to see. And so we had our library attorney draft up kind of what the resolution would look like. So we will not be voting on it tonight. It's more just a, any feedback or discussion too.
So the library attorney gave us a draft of the resolution and a memorandum that talks a little bit about the actual implementation and how that would work and how it affects, affects the library moving forward. So if and when the board decides to pass this resolution, it is in effect immediately after its passage. So we would have to communicate that to the village board. And any appointments from that time forward would be four-year terms. Anyone currently on the board would serve out their six-year term. And then it would be up to the village as they make appointments to begin the new staggering of terms. What else? Is there something else I was gonna say? But, oh, that this, this information was also shared with village council.
I still kind of in agreement that it's, you know, the right move to make. Obviously, we didn't share it with the village council and hope that they give, give us feedback. I, I don't believe we received any responses to the resolution draft. So it looks, looks good.
I really don't see a downside to it.
The downside is they have to vet more people. That's obviously not our issue, so.
Yeah, that's... But just in general, I think, I think it's more in line with a lot of other terms for other kinds of public officials and libraries and, you know. As I said before, when you say to someone who's got a middle school kid, they're gonna be on the board at least until their kid is in college, it's a little bit intimidating.
I agree. I think it's, I think it's healthy. I think it's, well, that opens up the opportunity for more people to join the board, different voices to join the board. I think it's, I think all of that. I don't, I can't really think of a, of a negative. Yeah. And even a reappointment, like an eight-year term versus, you know, 12 years. Right, right, right.
And it means that, you know, the council will have a little more to do more frequently, you know, which will enhance the communication process with them too. Something that I'm concerned about.
Do we have any concerns or any feedback on specific verbiage that the attorney provided? Is this one trust to do for a two-year term? Would that be the...
That would be up to the village to figure out how that.
Okay, okay.
But yes, they, they may do a two-year term to make the stagger come in correctly.
Okay.
It, it depends on when, when y'all do it and how everybody's terms line up. So, you know, you gotta get the, you gotta get the calendar out and map.
Right.
Yeah. The, my big question to you is, when, do you want to see it as an action item? And if so, when?
And my personal opinion, I think sooner. Yeah. I think that if we could, if we could get that in front of the village council soon, because we have potentially first things coming in. Yeah. Then I think that it would be, be all of us to get fresh energy and sooner. Because I, I know in my term ends, their term ends. It would kind of, it would get somebody here who has some kind of like history of being on the board before we start to all start transitioning off. So then we have somebody who's been here for, you know, a budget process if that's what you want. Or, or fresh new budget, whichever way you want to look at it. Well, then if they need to adjust, like, right, their term to help the stagger. I think it's, so, I mean, I think we've just, this is probably the second one that we've talked about it. I've talked just about bringing it to the attorney. So I, I wouldn't be comfortable voting on it next month.
If we're gonna do it, we might as well do it.
I agree, I agree. So we will hope that is an action item next month. Item B is the big draft budget for 2025.
So this is the time where we all flip around to the opposite side. So we're gonna start here. So the, all of this is in the board packet. Everything that I was going to show you up on the screen, with the exception of one page, is in the board packet. Again, I want, this is the revenue sheet. It does not change amongst the, we have two different expenditure drafts, but only one revenue draft at the moment. So again, as you all know, we're about 96% property tax funded. That is common for libraries in the state of Illinois. Since the inception of the capital needs assessment project, the average levy of this library has been 2.95%. We have not been keeping up with CPI. Over the last five years, our levies have increased 13.9%. CPI has gone up 17.1. And again, we have achieved $3.2 million in capital projects with that $1.4 million in money from the IGA and then balance transfers, all while keeping a sub-3% average levy increase. So here, this levy draft shows us, the revenue draft is at 4%. It does also show, unfortunately, our second largest source of revenue is the personal property replacement tax. And that is anticipated to have approximately a 28% decrease. And again, that is a revenue of, of which we have, over which we have no control. That is given to us by the state to replace something that happened in the early 70s. All of our lines are budgeted at the level anticipated from the 2020 tour actuals. Then the next page in, in the budget package, this shows that we are estimating a 4% increase in the equalized assessed valuation of property in our district or in the village. That is also the number that the village is using in their estimates. As you can see, here is the 4% change to the levy. So, and because we do anticipate the change to the EAB, the tax rate actually falls. So what happens is, your levy is a specific dollar amount. But that dollar amount is then spread over all of the tax, all of the value of property.
Julie, can I interrupt? Can I ask everyone to stop talking? It's, I know people are trying to whisper, but it's really distracting. So if, if you guys need to chat, if you would politely just exit and have your conversations and come back? Because it's really hard to kind of focus on Julie's voice. Thank you.
So I, the levy is a specific dollar amount. It is spread over the value of all property in the village. So over the course of the year, there may be properties that have been developed, like a new car dealership on Ogden, coming onto the tax rolls. So that spreads the levy dollar amount over a larger value. That's your equalized assessed valuation. And so that is why you can have the levy go up, but still have the tax rate go down. Because the value of, as the value of the property in the village increases, that levy gets spread over a wider area. This shows interesting little civics lessons. And as you can see, a 4%, they are not exactly proportional. So the 4% change in EAB actually affects the tax rates a teeny bit more than the 4% in levy increase, which results in a tiny little decrease to the tax rate. And that's assuming that all of the estimates are correct. Then you get to page 118. This is taxpayer impact using the most current median home value. And that is from the American Community Survey by the Census Bureau. And that has brought our median value up to 425. So that is what we're using in these estimates. And again, you see the tiny little decrease if all of our assumptions are true. So median home value, we do this in the per $100,000 of fair market value, just to allow folks like yourselves who are watching and listening, so that you can say, oh, well, my house is worth $500,000. So I can do a little math and figure out that by that per $100,000, mine would be approximately five times this. So that is why we present it that way each year. And hopefully it's helpful. So then on page 119, we have the tax rate, levy, and EAB history. I show the past five years and the estimate of the year moving forward. As you can see, our operating tax rate in 2020 was .2103. We've dropped over a penny since, since that time. And our levy has, as you can see, we've, we've kind of been up and down, but that average still comes out to, it's, over the past five years, it's 2.78% as an average. Over the last seven years, it's 2.95. So if you want to do all the math, and if anybody has any questions about further back, my spreadsheet for this actually goes back to like 2005. I just hide a lot of columns before I show it to you. And then this also brings in the per $100,000 of home value, so that you can see that our, the actual impact on the taxpayers has decreased since 2020. And then we also talk about the wage and salary increment. Because about 70% of our budget is personnel, I like to reflect what we've done on the personnel side so that you know where the raises and what kinds of things have been impacting on the salary and wage side. And no one anticipated the, the amount of inflation we were going to have over the last couple of years. So on page 120, we get into the expenditures budgets. So as I said, there are two different versions. The only difference is the social worker position and all of the costs related to that, including the retirement, health insurance, all of those things. So this is the fund balance with no social worker. So as you can see, if we continue to make the transfers at the budgeted amounts. So this is what we had anticipated doing this year, about $375,000. And then with that small increase, as we had talked about several years ago, doing a 2% to 3% increase each year to try to keep up with inflation. Unfortunately, what that does to us is it brings us an ending balance in 2025 that does not meet the operating... does not meet the operating reserve threshold in our finance policy. So according to our finance policy, our operating reserve is supposed to be 35% of the cost of a rooftop unit, the roof, and a boiler. I'm like, it was three things. So having done those projects semi-recently, we know what those costs are and have been able to project them forward and then do this calculation. Currently, that calculation is just under $500,000. It's at 492. So, you know, 500 is a nice round number to think of. So if we were to reduce the fund transfer in 2025, under this scenario, if we brought it down to about $280,000, we would get, we would achieve our operating fund balance. And what that would do is it would reduce the target of $1 million at the end of the capital needs assessment. And it brings it down. I did a new estimate for you. This is the page that is not in your board packet. So this shows reducing the 2025 payment. It still shows us making the 2024 payment, reducing 2025 to about 279. That would achieve our operating reserve, but now you can see what it does to the library capital replacement fund. We still wind up with over $600,000 by the end, and that's not even bringing it back to the former amount. That's only doing that 2% or 3% going forward. So I wanted to show you that, just so that you know that even if we reduce the amount that we transfer in 2025, we will still be able to pay for the large projects, the carpeting project, the automated material handler, which are the two big ticket items remaining in the capital needs assessment. Now, Julie, I was. And as you can see, next year, the 2025 expenses for the capital needs assessment are actually fairly low, just a couple of projects. So this is the simplified expenditures with no social worker. So this is the top lines. This is all personnel. So as you can see, it puts us at a 2.9% increase overall for staffing lines. This is driven primarily by the IMRF, which is our Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund rate increase, as well as the two part-time jobs and expanding one part-time job to a full-time. So the part-time jobs are the marketing and communications assistant to help build capacity for doing the ADA Title II compliance, the part-time business office person to help with all of the additional HR and finance tasks that have been handed down from the village over the last couple of years since the implementation of UNIS. And finally, expanding that part-time to full-time will allow the kids' room to devote a, to devote that, devote an assistant position, a whole position, to teen and tween services. And that would be a person who specifically spent half of their time working with adult and teen services, on services to teens, and would be having primary function of working the teen desk rather than the kids' desk. So help me, we need help meeting the demand of that new teen desk. This is the bottom half of the simplified, this is all of our non-personnel lines. As you can see, it is a .8% change. So our, it is primarily driven by the changes in commodities, supplies, small tools, equipment, things like that. The conferences, seminars, and meetings, that is actually where the additional money to fund the first year of tuition reimbursement is located. And under special legal going by this year's anticipated actual. And then in data processing services, this, this $43,000 and this $46,000 down here on other equipment repair and maintenance, that is actually just the move of the maintenance contract for the automated materials handler that has been, for some reason, they put it in data processing services, which the only other thing in there is our SLON catalog. And everything else that's a maintenance contract is in one of those other building or equipment repair lines. So we're just moving it into a line where it makes more sense. So that's more of a technical change. And, oh, and as you can see down here, our resource lines start here with electronic resources and go down here to AV materials. If you look, these are our staff, our managers have moved some things out of print and non-print, some budget into electronic materials to be that up. Any other questions on changes in these lines? And then overall, without the social worker position, the overall change, the expenditure budget is 2.3%. One of the reasons that we're having a disproportionate impact on our fund balance is in previous years, we have not performed to budget. We have come in under budget by quite a bit. With all of the inflationary pressures on our budget, we are finding that in 2024, this is the first year that we are going to perform much more closely to budget than we have And this, of course, is the capital replacement fund. As you can see, a much smaller amount for 2025, and especially as we have moved the carpet out of that. Oh, and then I, do you do 124 to 133, the pages in your packet? That is the budget departmental detail. So if anybody wants to follow along in like very specifically how the social worker affects the adult and teen services budget, which is the department would be in, you can go in and see that detail. So we're going to go down to, down, just past that, you get to our state, our standards for Illinois public libraries tell us that we should be looking at the IBLAR, that's the Illinois Public Library Annual Report Percentage Analysis that the state puts out every year to see how we are doing, just to compare us, how are we doing between, among other libraries? It's important to note that things like district libraries have to pay for their electricity, and so therefore their, all other expenditures do tend to be higher than ours, whereas we pay more for salaries and benefits, particularly as a suburban library. As you know, tiny little libraries in southern Illinois don't pay what we pay. So our, the, so the statewide average is just under 65% for all salaries and benefits. We're at over 70% there. We do beat all of the statewide averages as far as what we spend on materials. And then as you look down at the revenues, again, close to 96% from property taxes. Our personal property replacement tax is our next highest. Unfortunately, we have no control over it. And then the Illinois Public Library per capita grant is the only other thing that rises above 1% as a revenue item. All right, and then pages 135, 136, just have your pie charts on what, what it looks like. Your salaries and benefits come out to approximately 72%. And then as you get to your revenues, of course, it is all property taxes all the And then our next revenue, our next set of expenditure budget is with the social worker. So starting on page 137, that is the fund balance sheet. You can see the difference in what the ending balance would be. It's approximately just over $60,000 in the impact to the final budget. So again, I, it would, the library capital replacement fund we transfer to reach the operating reserve with the social worker would need to be about $219,000. That would bring us closer to $500,000 in the final, in the 2027, as the final balance of the library capital replacement fund when we finish the capital needs assessment. So just so you see what that actually works like. And then as you get to your expenditures, this again is the personnel, and as you can see, it really affects the personnel lines. That is a 4.5% increase to personnel with the social worker. Again, IMRF is the largest change, but also you can see it right here, because that would be a salary exempt position, is our assumption. And again, only a .8% change to, to the non-personnel lines, if anyone has any questions on those. But the overall budget change is 3.4% with the social worker included. So it does, it does have a pretty large effect there on the, on the bottom line. And again, the pages 141 to 150 show you the detail by department with the social worker. So if you want to go in and actually look at it, look at the change, what it does as far as IMRF, and you can compare those to individual department budget lines, if you're And then go down to our statewide percentage analysis. It actually, excuse me, changes, it's about a half a percent in our statewide budget analysis. We go from 71.8% for salaries and benefits with no social worker to 72.1% of our budget, of our expenditures with the social worker. And then of course, the final two pages are the graphs that show that. And it really doesn't move the needle. The, the graph really doesn't look any different with that small amount in, in the overall percentages. So I am happy to entertain any questions. I'm really looking for your direction, what you want to see in the August board packet. We do have a couple of, couple of open positions right now. We're hoping to have hired some people. We're hoping to, to just tighten up all of our estimates, both on our expenditures in 2024 and all of the estimates moving forward for 2025. We're going to get you the, the most accurate possible numbers by the August 4th. Social worker.
I think we still need some clarification on what this social worker is going to be able to do that just sending a person over to the village social worker wouldn't accomplish. How it, you know, may fit into crisis intervention, security issues. We've talked about some of these things before. More, you know, more of a specific job description, you know, will this person, for example, be training other staff on how to do these kinds of interventions? Because he or she's not going to be here 15 hours a day anymore when we're open. I, I, I think that you, my, my heart wants to do this. My head is saying we really need some more information on how you see this fitting in with the rest of the staff function, why it's really a necessary thing. I know it's a big thing, a coming thing with libraries, and it's something we will be showing some regional leadership on, which is of course appealing. But it's still probably not, pretty nebulous right now. So that's something we really need to look at.
And the biggest difference between what the village social worker does and what our social work interns do, which would be what our staff social worker would do, is the village social worker is a referral-based service. So she just makes referrals to other social service entities. She gives them the phone number, the website, the application form, whatever it is. What she does not do is what they call short-term case management. And that's where if the individual gets that referral, but doesn't know how to fill out that application and needs support in actually going on the computer and filling out the application, that's what our social worker would do, would be able to do that short-term. So the, a long-term social worker with somebody would walk them through that, and then the next step, and the next step, and the next step. Ours is short-term case management, so it's just to get that initial contact, to get the person registered or in, in process with that other social service entity, and let that entity take it from there, rather than, than helping them through all of the pieces of the process.
They'll be on their own, phone number in there on their own for the rest of the process.
And that's what the village's case worker does, would, would give them the phone number, the website, the application, but would not help them.
Tell them if they need help to come to the library.
So this probably isn't necessarily a great question to ask you, but why isn't the village social worker a short-term case worker?
That is a choice that the village has made about the services that they provide.
So I have similar, well, similar but not quite the same thinking as you already. I, I feel, I heard the importance, I gave the presentation, it was tremendous. I think some of the issues that we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about how, you know, about changing libraries, saving places, this is one way of achieving that. I do, but my, hang up a few, what kind of actually has to do with that last comment, which is, we know that, you know, when people walk through the doors of the library, and we talk about this in other contexts, that, that's, that's one interaction and we're one entity. There's lots of, it's all in the county though. You know, the church services, the village services, the county services, the other, you know, nonprofits, civic services, all of those exist in our community. And I, in order to make the kind of most of all of those exist in our community, and I, in order to make the kind of most of, of, if, if we hired a social worker, I want either that person or, you know, some, some set of people at the library and other entities to have more of that coordination, that I don't think we've seen so far, I think that's the only way to really make it work, because otherwise we're doing the same thing that, you know, I would just continue to go, okay, well, hand, like, we're handing them off to nobody, if there's kind of honor almost, which is, you know, it needs to be that way at some point, but it's, it could be better, it could be more integrated with some of the other services that exist or, or could exist to, to then supplement or, or complement what, what we've been doing.
That gets to something we heard in the public comment tonight about, about actually having a kind of coordination function community, and, and if, if the library does have an expanded role, which I think we all agree as a community resource center these days, has been evolving over several decades, and it is part of that.
I think I'm kind of along the same lines, I, I do see a need for the social worker, but I'm also, I'm just not sure that it makes sense to proceed with funding it before we understand, like, you know, I think, like you said, the, you know, someone talked about defining delivery gaps and, you know, working with the village in DuPage County, and kind of really understanding that if we're going to do this, we, it can't be like in a little social work bubble and not attached to other agencies, and that's, I'm hesitant to put forward the funding unless we really get an idea of how everything's going to sit together, because the last thing we want to do is, you know, replicate stuff that people are already doing.
And Julie, the village social worker, is there an opportunity for, for, for them to, in that position wherever, to have ours here, would that be something that could happen that they could come to us and, and do something?
I guess what, what we're all saying is we really want specifics on how you, how your staff sees this integrating with the rest of the library and the community before we commit to it as a, as a line item, rather than, say, a grant, pilot program at some
And I do, and I did put it in the packet, and I do encourage everybody to go back and look at, and if you didn't, if you weren't at the meeting where Van McGary, our Adult and Teen Services Manager, and our two social work interns made a presentation at the main board meeting, please go back and view it, it, it answers a lot of questions, you know, I, I think it's, it's good to go back and take a look again and, and really think about it in the context of the budget, how, because they talked a lot about their statistics, who they're helping, how they're helping them, and...
Yeah, I think after one of those comments earlier about, you know, the services that we're providing currently, the interns are not necessarily just for the unhoused or just for, you know, sort of, we're setting up a wide range of folks, and they provide some specific information about that, and seniors using the service and other folks just doing, you know, that little bit more than you could do with a referral and pass along service.
And if you're looking for information on what the village social worker is doing, the Human Services Commission, if you go onto the villages' website, go to the village, the Human Services Commission meetings, if you click on, it says agenda and minutes, but if you click on their agenda, it actually gives, behind the agenda is all of the statistics each month for the social, for their social worker, how people were referred to them, who they, you know, what the topics were, and, and all of that, so you can find some good information on what the village social worker is doing at the Human Services Commission page.
Julie, I, I did look at that a little bit, she made five hundred and thirty-two referrals as a full-time person between January and November, and our part-time social workers between September and June, less tied, week four hundred and thirteen, what are they called, touch points, were they called, touch points? With, with people actually direct, directly connecting with people, so there's clearly a need in our community, they've five hundred and thirty-two over a year, and more than thirty over just September to June, I mean, there's really, we, we need something, but I, I want to make sure that we, we understand a little bit more of what that will look like, and, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, obviously, I think that a social worker is a great benefit, but to a library, I just want to make sure that it makes sense with all these
Levy, four percent, how's that feeling?
Yeah, I was...
The changes to, would you want to see the, the, the changes to the twenty-twenty-five transfer to the library capital replacement fund reflected in each of these, so that you can, and, and I can run that balance sheet for the library capital replacement fund as well, so that you can get a sense of what it does on both sides.
Yeah, I mean, that is one of my main questions coming into this meeting, was how, like, what levers can we pull to achieve what I think most of us are, we've talked about in the passage, like minimizing changes and certainly more payments by, by taxpayers, right, so keeping that either stable or, or, you know, around the same rate so that there's not any changes, but al, and al, but also keeping that minimum threshold, both the library fund and the library capital placement fund, that's something, at least for the library fund, we need to have that minimum threshold in our mandate, so I was curious about what levers we can pull, so I appreciate this, this we shared out today, that helps a little bit to kind of see, yeah, so try to keep that even, what, what would play out, how it would play out in three years until twenty-twenty-seven, so that was helpful, um, I, yeah, I, I don't love the idea of increasing the rate, I guess, however, I'll, I'll channel Dave for a second, and I'll say, you know, your comment about the consumer price index, you know, how that's reduced to seventeen percent, what, what was it last year, I mean, where else in any of our lives have we seen an increase in value, an increase in services, an increase in the overall number of people served, an increase in profitability for less money than we paid in twenty-twenty? Like, that's a little bit insane, um, not, and I, again, like, I'm not ever getting like, oh, let's just like, try to, jump it up seventeen percent, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm saying like, wow, this is, again, kudos to y'all for putting budgets together and thinking so clearly about how, what we're headed, it's, it's kind of a miracle, right, to, to keep that rate so low and just have all these increases, where in so many other parts of our lives we're seeing reductions. So I don't know, I don't know if that one is that meaningful. Yeah.
If you're comfortable with the four percent, the board, I will, I can present it to you that way.
I think I'd like to hear more from the fellow workers, especially about the kind of ending up for the LCRF, kind of what we, because we got had today, so I don't think we've had full time spend, we're spotted on that, um, I think that's helpful, again, to see that that lever can be pulled, and we can, we can keep everything pretty much as it is, and with this, with this number running down, um, it does potentially make, it passes, and I'll just basically go see, it passes some of those problems down to future boards, right, in that case, like, okay, the next year if we can last, it probably can't be much more, so I don't want to back ourselves into a corner, um, I mean, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars is obviously something a corner gets, but it's, it's less than a million, so, you know, again, we need to talk about what that, how we feel about that as a board, especially going forward with so many ambitious things.
And it's important to remember that the financial consultant said that this board would need to do an eleven-point-seven-five percent increase to the levy to fund the capital needs assessment through twenty-twenty-seven, and then thereafter a two-to-three percent increase every year, that's what the financial consultant says. We have done almost every project on that at under three percent levy increase, so we have been doing really well using this fund balance strategy and just, you know, a little bit at a time, and chipping away at it, and doing things as cost-effectively as we could, you know, hiring our building operations director who was able to do most of our LED changeover in-house, made a huge impact on the costs of the library capital replacement, on the costs in the capital needs assessment, so I, I think it, it's kudos to the board for having taken that, rolled the dice, and, and taken the chance to not do the, the big increase, but to, to try to do it incrementally over time, and it, it's worked so far.
I mean, I feel like, looking at that, you know, six twenty-nine number, it's hard because obviously so much can transpire between now and then, so like, to look at, you know, the cost of our estimated projects in twenty-twenty-six being like, close to a million, and then it like teeters all the way down to, to forty, I mean, I, I feel like with the big projects coming up and the big renovation, I feel like there's a really good chance that, you know, the potential for some of the twenty-twenty-six projects to get pushed over twenty-twenty-seven or even pushed further out, depending on, you know, what's being renovated, you know, what kind of gets taken care of, it's almost, you know, I feel like it's too early to, to make a judgment on how we feel on that number.
I, I think also in saying that, if you, if we move forward with some of these large changes, there's so many sort of what else could happen, and I kind of mentioned that when I said like furniture, and new replacement of things that might, might come up, that we don't know yet, that we know more than that for me.
And, and that's where I'm really thinking that bumping up the new capital needs assessment before we get the next financial consultant in, so as, as we figure out what options you might want to pursue as far as the building overall, I think that is also the time for us to do a new capital needs assessment, to make sure that we are also factoring in the long-term health of the building as a whole, because, you know, our number one thing is we have to keep, you know, it's got to be heated, cooled, watertight, you know, all of those, all of those good things in, in the long term, and so that, that's a, a big priority for the board.
So as far as the levy, like, four percent seems...
Four percent is keeping us, you know, all estimates holding true.
Yeah.
Pretty much the same as last year, in terms of, again, being sort of the idea that balance, like, keeping the per-dollar, about the same, with the levy, the rate, sorry.
Right.
About, whatever.
Keep the tax rate fairly level, that's, that's...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, do we want to see like, a scenario where it's, you know, I mean, I feel like you'll usually do like a quarter variance?
Each scenario is a really hard...
That's right, that's a difference.
I mean, that would be the only, since I have one thing to say.
They're believing, like, yeah, that's it, yeah.
And if, one of the things to remember is that for every, for, never mind, oh, I'll put it, I'll put it in writing for the next, for the next one, um, the, the change of, I believe it's point-one percent to the, to the levy is only about sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, so what do you say, about sixty?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay. So it's three or six, three or sixty grand left?
Don't quote me on that one, I, I gotta go back and, and give you guys a chart, let me, let me give you a chart on that, how about, how about that?
So by next month, what, do you anticipate any numbers kind of getting a little bit more set in stone? Because I know you said like, HR, the salary schedule, or the HR percentage won't be until like later in the fall after we've already voted on this, so that's going to be...
I think some of the, some of the biggest things that we're waiting on right now is, we've got a couple of full-time positions, and seeing what the new people elect as far as benefits, because it's also important to note that if somebody chooses the full family benefits, and the person before them only had employee benefit, had employee only, the swing can be over fifteen thousand dollars in one employee change, one decision, so when you think about that in the, the grander scheme here, you know, when you think about that in terms of like the social worker position, if we have, the, the impact is just over sixty thousand dollars, two staff members electing family coverage would also, would have that same impact, which is why the health insurance is always the thing that gets me crazy.
Yeah.
But again, we follow the same levels of employee and employer cost for our health insurance, our life insurance, dental vision, as the village, so we, we have implemented where this, where in the villages group, and we do the exact same as they do for all of the village employees.
I still like to keep it as lean as possible, and just, I'm still kind of...
Yeah, I think that chart would be helpful, yes.
Yeah.
And actually, if I can manage it, I'll try to get that out to you guys soon.
That's the direction I needed moving forward. I remember a lot of this executive session, which we do not have, so we are ready to adjourn this meeting at nine oh nine PM. Thank you all for coming.